Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January eighth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, first order of business will be to call the meeting to order, and we wish all of you residents of Ashland watching out there a happy new year. Also at this time, I'd like to welcome as a new member to the board is an associate member, Robert DeBenedetto, sitting over there. Robert, thank you very much for volunteering to serve and sit on the board, and we welcome your future participation as matters come before us.
Thank you.
Uh, our meeting is being broadcast live by WACA TV, and if the one person in the audience is, uh, taping the meeting, I would ask her to acknowledge that, but if not, a mere shake of the head, which she is doing now, uh, is fine. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, first order of business after the call of the meeting to order is the continued public hearing on Nine Tag at Court, uh, an application for a variance. Uh, this matter was on before us, uh, on December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we took, uh, evidence at that time, uh, heard the applicant, uh, and the applicant's, uh, representative speak. Uh, no members of the public spoke. Uh, we, uh, then began a discussion of the matter. Sitting on this hearing are Brian Forrestall, Smirti Chudhuri, and myself. Uh, at the conclusion of our discussion, uh, we directed our assistant town planner, Amanda to Malina Dumas, uh, to draft a decision, uh, in accordance with what we had discussed, uh, to approve the, uh, variance. Uh, Amanda did so and, uh, forwarded it to us a draft decision, uh, late last week. And I understand there was a revised, um, decision that was sent via email about mid-afternoon today. Um, I for one, being at work, have not had an opportunity to review the revised decision. And Amanda, I would ask you if you'd be kind enough perhaps to just point out what revisions were made to the, uh, draft that you had sent to us, uh, last week?
Sure, um, so on pages two, at bottom of page two, onto page three, um, the findings by the board on the application for a variance. Um, the original draft had similar language, but I wanted to emphasize that, um, based on the shape of the lot and based on the existence of the drainage easement, um, that those were the findings that you found to satisfy the requirements or the criteria for a variance.
Very good, okay, I see that, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had no, no questions or, uh, revisions to the, uh, to the draft, uh, that was sent out last week. And I think the revision that you submitted this afternoon is most appropriate and certainly, uh, further solidifies the basis of, uh, the discussion and, uh, way we were leaning last time. Um, Brian or Smirti, do you have any, uh, changes, proposed revisions in the?
No, sounds good to me.
Okay, well, I think that, that being said, we do have to take a formal vote, uh, to grant the, uh, to grant the variance. I note in the draft decision, um, Brian is making the motion to grant the request for a variance, um, and that that motion is going to be, uh, seconded by Smirti. So if we could just follow in that process so we don't have to redraft the decision, that would probably be, uh, be best, okay?
Make a motion to grant the request for a variance to construct the sunroom addition, finding that the proposed addition would not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling pursuant to chapter two eighty-two, sections nine point two of the Ashland zoning bylaw.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And do we have to formally, uh, state our name and then vote in favor? I know at times we have done that for hearing decisions. I think we do. I'm not quite sure why, but I think we do.
Right.
Um, I, John Eftrefeathen Jr., uh, chairman, uh, vote to grant the variance application as stated.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, member voted to grant the variance application as stated.
Aye, Smirti Chodri, associate member, also vote in favor of the petition as stated.
Very good, I think that makes it official. We have the, uh, I think the signature page to sign here, which will be attached to the, uh, to the decision. Uh, and just so the applicant knows, the decision will be filed with the town clerk's office, I'm assuming probably tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And, uh, twenty days, I believe, is the, uh, period that there could be a possible appeal by some party so that, um, the actual finalization will be, uh, twenty days thereafter if there is no appeal.
Mm-hmm, so the appeal period, just to clarify, the appeal period starts the day after it is filed. So I'm gonna file it tomorrow, so then twenty days from, uh, Thursday.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, and Peter, um, the builder, had spoken with you, I think, earlier about a check?
His office did.
Sent it?
Uh, they, they said he was coming, so that's why I was-
I thought he was too, so I'm a little bit concerned because he's always dropped.
Right, right, um, it's, so it's a check for the legal ad that we put in the newspaper, so, um, so either you or him or someone can drop it off or send it in, so.
Yeah, I thought he was bringing it, so I didn't bring, but otherwise I can swing it by.
Okay, yeah, that will work.
Okay.
Okay.
So tomorrow is okay?
Yes, yeah, that's totally fine.
Okay.
Okay, do you have the signature as well?
Yes, so there's four pages to sign. Um, yes, sorry, pass that along, please.
Set it back down, okay, oh, sorry.
We're done.
Okay, that is, um, tip.
Thank you very much.
Did, did, did he bring the check? If so, we can have him hand it over to Amanda right now. If not, that's fine, but, uh-
Let me see if I have a check.
Or, or you can drop it off tomorrow, that's, that's fine too.
Okay, then I can-
What is the check amount?
Um, let me look it up, I emailed it to Gina.
Thirty-nine thousand.
You know what, why don't we, we can handle this outside of the meeting, we don't need to pull things up on that score.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So I can, I can email you tomorrow. I can email you tomorrow, um, with the amount.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I actually have blank check on here, if you don't email.
Um, I don't know it offhand, so, sorry.
So do you want me to just send you a check tomorrow, which you find out?
Sure, yeah, I emailed the invoice to, to Gina, so, so she showed up the amount.
No, it's eighty-eight dollars, no?
I, I don't know the exact amount.
Okay. Is that, is that okay with you, if we send you the check?
Yep, that's fine, and she'll be-
Yeah, because I think it's delayed.
All right, I can drop it tomorrow.
Okay, well, let's-
We can sort that out.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Uh, at this point, I'd, I'd also like to stop and just acknowledge that, um, Sheila Page, the town planner, has accepted a position, uh, with another town and has, uh, left the town of Ashland, and I would like to just thank her, uh, on behalf of all of us for the, uh, assistance she has provided over the last couple of years. She was a big help to us, and although she was not directly our, uh, our aide, we've always been dealing with the assistant town planner. Uh, um, she did, um, provide some nice guidance and advice, and, uh, we appreciate her, her service. And now Amanda is doing double duty for the time being.
Yeah.
Uh, let's move on then to the next item on the agenda, which is a discussion of current filing fee structure and possibility of amending fee structure, and noting that there is a future public hearing will be required to amend, uh, the date to be determined. And just a little bit by way of background, um, we in the zoning board of appeals have not amended our fees for, for some time. Um, there was a discussion, uh, several years ago, prior to a comprehensive permit application being filed, that noted that, um, some of our filing fees appeared to be, uh, fairly outdated and did not adequately recoup the costs that, um, the town was incurring with certain applications. I note that the, uh, planning board, uh, has also been considering its, uh, fee structure. They had a public discussion, which is, uh, or an informal discussion, which is the, uh, what we're doing this evening, and they have a public hearing scheduled, I believe, this, this week, next week?
Uh, this Thursday.
This Thursday, uh, on, uh, their fee schedule. Uh, Amanda submitted to us as part of the hearing pack, uh, the, the meeting packet, excuse me, uh, sort of a breakdown on the, uh, zoning board of appeals fees. Uh, also provided, uh, perhaps some proposals, a draft set of proposals on, uh, fee increases that we might wish to consider, and also a list of fees that are proposed for the planning department, uh, as of January tenth of this year.
Sorry, that's, that's a typo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, it, so this is what the planning board will be reviewing at their next.
Will be reviewing on, on the table, okay.
Yeah.
And that being said, I think I would like to turn the meeting over, if people have no objection, to Amanda to lead the discussion on, uh, what our fees are presently and, uh, what the, um, suggested changes might be for us to begin the, uh, to begin the discussion. And that being said, Amanda?
Sure.
It's yours.
Okay, so, um, so like, um, John stated, the planning board is currently, uh, looking at revising their fees. Um, and so something that the ZBA should look at too. Um, so part of it is that the current, the way that this, uh, fees are currently set up is that applicants pay one fee to apply, so that's their application fee, their filing fee. And then they pay a legal ad fee, they pay for an abutters list, and then they pay for the staff to mail these notifications to the abutters. And so what we're do, what, what at least for the ZBA side, is that we would like to try to streamline this. So they pay us one check, and then we do the same stuff we're doing, because we, we send the legal ad. Um, the applicant does pull the abutters list, but gives it to us, and then we send the mailing out. So we just wanna make it, um, sort of formalized, that they give us one check, and then we do all of these items. Instead of, um, actually just, just now, we had that whole discourse with the applicant, because they haven't paid us for the legal ad. So, um, so in the, so in, usually in most other cases, um, we submit the legal ad to the Metro West Daily News. Um, they send us an invoice, we would tell the applicant, here's the invoice, they would drop off a check. And so it's a lot of chasing people down for money, um, so this is an effort to kind of streamline it, um, at least on the staff side, so that, um, we can do what we need to do and, and not have to fall off on a million checks. Um, and so the, the, in, on the second page, the proposed, and there is another typo there, um, for the first application type, special permits, Stu pointed that out, that it, um, it should say two fifty instead of three hundred. But, um, generally speaking, if we could, um, take the legal ad fee, which ranges from fifty to seventy-five dollars, more towards the seventy-five dollar side, um, and then combine that with the notice, um, so the mailing cost, um, estimated to be twenty, I would say twenty-five to fifty. Um, these are a little skewed towards the higher end, the current fees, um, but proposing a one hundred dollar increase to the, um, current fee structure.
So basically, th- this would not be, uh, raising the cost that the applicant is, uh, responsible for now, but it would just be simplifying it to one check?
Right.
Um, I, I was curious with the discussion that, that came up about the, um, the legal, uh, notice, uh, fee not having, bill not having been paid as yet. I had always assumed that when a matter, a hearing, a request for a special permit or a variance came before us and was actually before us, that all the fees had been, had been paid.
Right.
And I think that, that's generally our policy, isn't it? This one just sort of?
Um, so that's generally the policy. I think a little bit of it was a carryover from, from transitioning from, um, the last assistant town planner to me.
Okay.
Also partly because I had to learn how to do accounts payable and billing.
Okay.
But, but also like, the way that the accounts are set up is essentially all of these checks, like planning, zoning, they get sort of put into one account, um, and then we pay out of this revolving account. So there's never a time where we get a bill and couldn't pay the eighty-eight dollars. It's not like there's a negative balance or a zero, um, balance. But, um, so it's sort of a courtesy that the town kind of pays the newspaper promptly and then, uh, asks the applicant for the money afterwards. Um, sometimes, depending on, uh, timing, like, if we have to rush an ad, like, you know, to get it in for the deadline, we might have to pay extra money, so that's why there's not really a set, you know, per word count for how much legal ads cost. They generally run around like seventy-seven dollars. Um, for instance, that one was like eighty-eight something, I didn't know the, the, the total off the top of my head. But, um, so generally, they run around like that seventy-five dollar mark.
Okay.
Do we not have to give notice for an admin appeal for a building?
Uh, I don't think we do, but we might do it as a courtesy. So there are certain, so I mean, everything that's, that's listed here, uh, variance, special permit, all of that is required to give notice. Um, we would probably err on, I, I'll have to actually double check, so I'm not sure if it's required, but generally, if it's something that is being appealed, we would send a courtesy.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe that one should be increased as well. But I can double check that one before our next meeting.
Yeah, I can remember, we did have an, an administrative appeal of a building inspector's decision, uh, a year or two ago.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I don't remember whether we had a public, whether there was a, a legal publication notice or not for that.
I don't remember ever.
I, I'm gonna, I'm guessing we didn't, but I'm not sure.
I know it was super popular.
Mm-hmm.
So if you could check on that, so that it would be a, a good, because obviously if there is going to be one, and it may be good public policy to have a notice so that-
Right.
You know, the folks know about it, uh, rather than just the appealing of party, uh, it would be, uh, it would be a good idea to, uh, increase that one as well.
Right. And for instance, like, just by comparison, so, um, so cases that go to the ZBA, uh, are properly noticed according to mass general law, um, for something like this, us talking about the fee schedule. Um, so we have that listed on today's agenda a, as a discussion. Um, for instance, the planning board had their discussion of the fee schedule last month, or last two weeks ago, um, at their last meeting. And then, um, you schedule a public hearing, you put it in the newspaper, we can't notice the whole town, but it's posted downstairs, posted in the newspaper, it's put on the agenda. So that's why we're talking about it now, um, I can definitely find out that answer. And then at our next meeting, we'll, um, we'll advertise for a, a public hearing discussion about the fee schedule, um, posted everywhere, and then talk about it again, and then make decision then. But this is sort of the first step in that process.
Okay, um, the, uh, looking at the, um, the peer review deposits, which I think for, for us have only, and as the CBA, have only involved, uh, comprehensive permit applications.
Right.
Uh, there's no proposed change in, in those, is that, um, correct?
No.
Okay. Any, uh, any thoughts, questions, um, concerns? I mean, to me, it seems to be a, uh, good policy to simplify the, the collection process, to make it easier for the applicant to, to write only one check, and easier for the town to re, receive and deposit only one check, rather than have multiple checks and have something perhaps fall, fall through the cracks, uh, as we, we saw this evening, and then have to, uh, you know, sort of make sure that, uh, you know, the final check is received, uh, it seems to me to make sense. And it appears that the, the increased fees being sought basically just cover the, the realistic costs of the, uh, of the process. I, I would say, I know when you were estimating the costs of the legal notices, uh, and the, uh, cost of the abutters, and there was a range, um, I would suggest that in order to, um, protect the town, uh, we would go, we would wanna set the additional monies to be based upon the higher fee-
Right.
-rather than the lower or even a medium fee.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would there be consideration that in situations where the actual cost for the abutters list and the legal notification is less than the raised, the raised fee that monies be returned to the applicant, that probably wouldn't work?
No, um, I, I mean, I can't think of any instance where anything like that.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, the town is covered and not having to, you know, pay more money out for these things. Once we've solidified the payments-
Right.
Uh, to just one payment, that, that that payment is gonna be enough to-
Like adequate.
To cover the expenses that the town is going to have for these items, uh, rather than the applicant having to pay for it as they do now.
Right, I, I think it's actually a little bit, um, clearer with the zoning board than, than with the planning board necessarily. I know there's been instances where something, like, if something has to get re-advertised, and then, then that's kind of on us to cover that cost.
Okay.
Um, if it's like an error on the town's part, um, surely if something, i- if there's an instance where it was like, if we got in a butters list that was like a thousand homes, then we could, um, figure out if there's a way to like char, do a surcharge for that, but, um, but so far, I haven't seen like, um, super long abutters lists, at least for the zoning board cases, so.
I mean, I think the only time you would have very large numbers is if, uh, a condominium complex was a list of abutters, or-
Right.
Perhaps, yeah, would probably be, uh, because I know we have seen some on, uh, when the application has been on, um, Pond Street, for instance, that, uh, a, a number of the, uh, condo residents were listed as abutters.
Mm-hmm.
So there were more than in just the general neighborhood.
Right.
Okay, any, any other questions, concerns? Are we ready to, um, to put the recommendations as, um?
Well, so this is, this is technically a discussion, so we'll still have to have a public hearing on that?
No, I understand, but I just wanna make sure that when we're gonna have a public hearing, what we're also going to be, we're proposing at that public hearing is what we're discussing tonight.
Sure, yep.
Because it's not just gonna be a, a free fall, open hearing where people pick numbers out of a hat. We're gonna be presenting a proposal, and then there's gonna be a, an opportunity for the public to comment on that, raise questions, whatever.
Okay.
Sounds good to me, as stated.
I would, um, just to jump on the chair's last comment about whether our notice fees for the town are on the higher end, like, more than a hundred percent, more than what the proposed hundred percent says. Maybe we can put like an asterix and say, if the notice fee, I don't know, exceeds like eighty-five dollars, or like, whatever. I mean, considering the fact that you're maxing it at seventy-five, we can even use seventy-five and say, if it does exceed seventy-five dollars, then the cost will be, I don't know, if you wanna give a flat fee, or the balance-
Mm-hmm.
-of the actual cost.
Yeah, um-
That's for the newspaper advertising.
Yeah.
Because we're really-
Or even the abutters, you, and, I mean, I, I think we should put the abutters there too, because you can't gauge how many abutters you're gonna have.
You know, we're really at the, uh, newspaper's mercy when it comes to the, the fees that they set. And, uh, given the issues that we read that newspapers are having, uh, it, I would anticipate that their-
Prices are gonna increase.
Bills and costs would continue to, uh-
Right.
To rise for providing that service, uh-
And, and so these are, these were, like, these are our current, um, costs associated with public hearings, but, um, they're also like an average that reflects current, um, because Sheila and I did all the math out for-
Okay.
All of our, like, ads for fiscal year twenty eighteen.
Oh, they are current, okay, I just didn't know how you got the derived numbers.
Yeah, so that's sort of an average, but, um, but I can certainly like, look into it more to make sure that, you know, look further back to see if there's instances where there have been really expensive or-
No, I, I mean, it sounds like you guys already did your homework on that, yeah, if that's the average, then that's fine, um.
So is the idea that if, uh, we're setting this at a hundred dollars more, that that's at the mid-level? So if there's people with more abutters or people with less abutters, it'll ultimately average out, so?
The, the idea is that it would average out, but, I mean, that is a good point about if it goes, you know, if there's a threshold and then X amount per, I would rather keep it simple, but, but I can certainly look at that and see if there's other, um, other ways we could protect the town in terms of cost. Um, we don't, we'll, you know, we don't, we don't have a set cost for legal ads, we don't have a set cost for, um, in term, like, you know, di, every abutters list is a different number.
Right, but it's different.
Um, but I could look at like a different, like, fi, uh, consider like different ways to break that down and bring it back for the next.
Well, do you know what, uh, surrounding towns have been doing? I haven't looked, so, I-
Um, I mean, the last town I worked in, it was a flat rate, um, and that seemed to make sense. Uh, but I don't know about surrounding towns, but I could look into that for sure.
I would think it would average out.
Right.
Sometimes it's gonna be big, sometimes it'll be small, and- We're, we're starting to get complicated if we, yeah, go, go-
For fifty dollars, right, anywhere? Yeah.
Yeah, we're not talking about large numbers here, and it would be a lot simpler to go with a flat fee.
Right, I mean, in, in, in the instances where they're, uh, close enough to a condo complex, you know, that, that could, I, I haven't yet to see in a, a long, uh, like a lengthy abutters list, it's usually around like fifty to seventy. Um, like seventy is probably the longest one I've seen here, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean there's-
But you still maxed it at fifty, from the old, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, like, like fifty people.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, mhm.
But you, then you're losing money, right?
Yeah, so see, in the old scheme, you s, the town still maxed it at fifty, so it didn't, I guess it doesn't matter, since we've already been accu, accruing that loss, I guess.
Why don't we just say at cost, I mean, whatever it costs?
Well, then you gotta figure it out.
Two dollars per person?
That's what it was before.
But then you gotta figure it out every time, still, and the administrative cost to figure it out every time gets burdensome.
Yeah.
Well, you still have to figure this out too.
No, so we're to-
This is just putting the, the fifty dollars max on it, so if it's twenty-five, what, what if it's forty dollars?
So that first page is, is the current, the current fee schedule, but on the-
There's two pieces of, all of this is excised, and they just add a hundred dollars to here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I I agree that I think the the simpler we keep it, the better off we're probably, we are, and the applicants will be as well in in the future.
Yeah, time is money too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
For definitely.
I see, okay.
Um, okay, well, why don't we um put it on the uh
The next week.
the agenda for the next meeting
Okay.
with a notice for a public hearing to go out, um, and taking into consideration what we've, uh, what we've discussed tonight, uh, if there are any changes that um well, what would you propose to do before that meeting? We need send out to to each of us what the proposed fee schedule will be.
Mm-hmm.
And that will be what will be discussed uh at the meeting, plus anything, anything else that comes up.
Right, and I mean, I could certainly do research on like how neighboring towns do do their fee schedules and breakdowns, but um I was, you know, the hope was that it was similar enough to the Planning Board, that that would
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I think
make sense.
that's, yeah, they either do it one fee or, oh, is it Ashland stands alone, we do it. Okay. We don't need to take a vote on that, I'm assuming, do we?
I don't think so.
No.
Um, but but just quickly to note, so we don't have, I guess, I can wait till updates to tell you. We don't, we don't have any uh cases currently, like, pending, so, um
Ah. Oh, okay.
So our next meeting will be determined when when we receive cases, so, uh, applications, so
Okay, that's fine.
I I n- I've heard of a few, but until they submit the paperwork, it's not real, so.
Sure. Okay, well, w- we stand ready to serve when needed.
Okay.
Boy Scout. I'm I'm okay with not being here on Tuesday nights.
Yeah, yeah. I know we did get above second class, but I was a Boy Scout.
Yeah.
Okay, back on to then to uh item number two under other business, approval of minutes from our December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Um, Amanda sent out a draft of those
Awful.
uh, minutes for, consisting of six pages. It was a rather long and um meeting with lots of matters discussed. Um, anybody have any questions about the minutes or proposed revisions, changes?
No, I read through it, it looked good to me.
Okay, did same for me?
Same for me.
Um, is there a motion then to approve the minutes as uh submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and Robert, as our newest member, will abstain from this vote. Um, okay. Staff updates and administrative matters. We we jumped ahead on staff updates or administrative matters, to know that we don't have any matters before us uh, scheduled for uh future meeting. Uh, anything, um, anything else?
Uh, no, I mean, just the, um, Sheila is no longer here, um, but my understanding, well, I'll be covering planning board meetings as well until we have a replacement, and my understanding is the town is working on it, so, um
Okay.
so that will be happening in the future, but, um, but yeah, so as soon as we get cases, I'll for sure, um, you know, schedule them and let you guys know.
Hope the town is doubling your pay now that you're doing double duty. Sorry. Okay, um, is there anything else under that? If not, um, I guess I, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Would you like the uh the honors for the, at your first meeting?
Sure, I move, I so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, excellent. Good night, everybody.